All right, it is 4:01 on a hot July afternoon. And we will call the Kerrville City Council Workshop to order at 4:01. And do we have any public comments?
No.
All right, thank you. Up first is a Heart of the Hills Center update. Mr. Hornis.
Hi. How are y'all?
Good.
Did you get some good photos with the...
We did, we did.
I'll have to add so they can crop me out.
I think he's gonna have some of them at our regular meeting tonight, too.
I'd like to be the one that takes the photos.
Thank you.
You?
Martin, can you pull up that PowerPoint? Two A and two B? Getting in your way.
No, you're not.
We haven't sat together in a long time.
I bite.
The workshop?
I got the blue memo.
Hey, we are.
We all have blue today, so we all got the blue memo.
All have blue.
Okay, well, that feels good right there.
It does. I said for once it feels good going down my back.
You gotta catch a chill out there soon.
Oh, I know.
Righty. Gotta wait till Martin does his magic. There it is. Awesome. So, we are here to give you an update on what we have so far for the Heart of the Hills Heritage Center, also known as the AC Shriner Building. So, run through a couple of these old slides pretty quickly. These are all key priority areas, they're guiding principles. Seen all this before. The initial funding, four million dollars of that raised into the city, and then one million dollars through the donations for the HHHC board. So, the funding portions for five million dollars total. Three point six in construction costs, and what we have that broken down is three point two five for the design-build contract with three hundred and fifty in contingency, and then four hundred thousand dollars set up for capital renovations into the future, right? That sinking fund, that asset replacement stuff that we've been talking about, this is one of those. And then HHHC has one million dollars for their startup display and artifacts. So, our whole history of all those timeframes going back to 2015 and the acquisition of the property to today. I'll just go back to the last time we discussed it, on May 15th. Marksmen had to sit down with us and they gave us kind of their determination and their understanding of where we all sit, and before you were the options that they presented, option A, option B, and option C for what to consider. After discussions with HHHC board and their executive director, it was the wish for the full use of the facility, right? And so, we had a structural engineer out to take a look at that, met with staff a few times to discuss options in front of us, and what we have is the following. So, discussions with marksmen regarding the first floor for the renovations to meet the needs of what they, what will need to be met for the code, sorry. It basically comes down to, you know, pounds per square foot, more or less. How many, how many, how many pounds per square foot can you, can you, can you get? And so, for the first floor to get to a hundred pounds per square foot, we're gonna have to put some piers underneath the facility and some framing additions into it. Thirty-six piers, to be exact. And, and so, when the structural engineer took a look at the full use of all the facilities in the way that the board envisioned it, I think the way that everybody envisioned it, they were concerned because there was a lot, a lot of work that needed to get done. So, for the full use of the second floor, the full use of the third floor, they were hesitant on giving us a number because it would require significant structural work, both in the frame and the interior. And that's to be at full occupancy with all of the, if you wanted to put whatever you wanted to in there, load capacities being at their max, how that would, how you deal to do that? And they were like, "Well, I don't know that we can, I don't think we can get there." And they were really reluctant to give us some kind of pricing on that. And so, we said, "That's not an answer that we can use." And so, structural engineers met with code, code officials out at the site, and they, they had just a sit-down, "How are we gonna get to, how are we gonna get to a yes with this? What can we do here?" And so, what we came to is if the building was registered as a historic structure, which it is currently not, on any historic registry, then that would fall under the purview of, I mean, it does fall under the purview of the International Existing Building Code, but within that building code, there's historic provisions in there that allow for latitude for both the building and the fire official to make their determination, so falling within those parameters. Because it is really hard to fully renovate hundred, hundred-and-fifty-year-old homes to IBC standards, and the building codes understand that. That's why they put those provisions in there. So, what they've come up with is not a full answer, and this is what I was telling to the folks on the board, is I wish I could come in here today and say, "It's gonna be this number that you can have on your second floor." I'm still waiting for that information. I was hopeful I was gonna have it before the meeting, but I think they're still working through their calculations, and they don't wanna be presumptive and make any mistakes. So, what they basically said is that if the historic designation can be put in place, that a limited occupancy can happen on the second floor. To what end? We're still sourcing out that information. Essentially, it comes down to that same pounds per square foot. And so, once we get that number, we'd like to go discuss with Angela and HHHC, and I spoke to her earlier today, about what the programming would look like. On the first floor, it's a little easier. The load weights are a lot stronger. On the second floor, it becomes a little bit more interesting. So, the heavier your, your, your museum pieces are, the fewer people that you're gonna be able to have. More kind of paintings and instructional stuffs that you can have on the wall, the more people that you can have. We're still waiting to get to that number, and so hopefully within the next week, we'll be able to have that from Marksmen and their team. And that'll give us time to get HHHC to review, here's, here's what you can do. So, that's the second floor. And then for the third floor, unfortunately, they said there's, you can't do any storage up there. You can have an office space for your executive director, you can have office space up there. And in order to do that, still need a one-hour fire barrier inside the elevator lobby area, which doesn't significantly add to the cost, and, but there's no storage on that third floor. So, it's kind of what it is. It was full use of that first floor, a limited occupancy on that second floor, and office space on the third floor. And the Marksmen team feel they can encompass that within that option A price that was presented, which is that five point three million dollars. But, that is not what HHHC had asked for. They had asked for the full use of that space. And I think, when I asked them, you know, "Why don't you wanna give me a number?", they're like, "Well, 'cause you would take, you'd have to take the walls off of the house, put in a new frame, get into the interior of the house, put in new framework." And it's really kind of hard to ballpark that. And I said, "Well, give me some kind of range." And so, it was anywhere from an additional one point five to three, something like that. And they were really reluctant to ask me to hold them to that. And I told them I wouldn't. Because it's, you know, when you, when you renovate old buildings, me and my wife bought old houses in the past, you uncover it, you're not sure what you're gonna see. But, to, to meet the building code, which is the threshold, if we weren't to create a historic designation for that second and third floor, that's kind of what it would take. It would take a lot of structural work, both inside and outside the building.
So, you can designate only one floor as historic?
No, this would, the historic...
It would have to be the whole building.
It would be the whole building. You would wanna do the whole building. And that gives, what that gives the, the officials, the ability to do is allow for that limited occupancy and allow for those uses. So, without that historic designation, that second floor option and the third floor option can't exist.
Go away.
They go away. So, so we got that information.
So, that five point three is with the historical designation?
Yes, and if you remember, when they, when they put option A there, they had that little caveat on the bottom that said, you know, "Provided the second and third floor can, you know, meet the loading requirements at a full use in that capacity." So...
Michael, does, has the, has the board, are they aware of this?
We just got it.
And so, they're not?
So, they have not had a chance to yet, had a check. Cause we were still trying to suss out a lot of this information from Marksmen leading up to today's meeting, and, cause we wanna get them to a number. I wanted to come here before you and say this occupancy can be fifty, or seventy-five, or a hundred, whatever that number would be. And they're not there yet. So, I think what they wanna be able to do is, again, speak to the board, talk through what their programming options would be, while they finalize, here's what this number's gonna be. And I think that's, that's gonna help inform their decisions on where, where they wanna move forward.
Is it too soon to ask what it takes for a historical designation?
So, there's many different options. There is the Kerr Historical, Kerr County Historical Commission, I knew I was gonna get that wrong, it's been an acronym day, and I was gonna screw it up. Going through that process, Kim notified me that the old City Hall building is on that list of places. And so...
Found it on their website.
I don't know the timeframe, but the, the document creation and the request for the designation can run concurrently. You don't, that, that doesn't have to be a precursor to it. Essentially, it's permitting from the fire marshal and the building official, so prior to permits being issued and construction being able to commence, we would have to go through that step. So...
That's a local option, is the county does that.
Okay, so it doesn't have to go beyond the county?
That's what I understand.
I don't believe it does. It just goes to the county, the county...
County judge.
Commission, and if the commission approves it, then it would go before the judge. One of the board members actually just went through it with their building not too long ago.
Okay, well, that's good news.
Dr. Reckert did.
Michael, on that same note, like looking at houses, or look at a house in Galveston that's on the National Historic, now would this be a National Historic Designation? Because those things are like strict guidelines by the Department of the Interior. If you wanna paint the wall, you gotta get their permission.
So, there's a couple of things that fall into play there. If the city of Kerrville had a historic overlay zoning district and had architectural requirements for that historic zoning area, then there would be those limitations. If any of the buildings that we own, which this is the only one I think that we own that's historic, if we went out to go for grant funding, either through the state or through the federal government, there's a lot of stipulations in there that we would have to meet. So, really, the, the restrictions fall more in requesting additional funding from other sources, if we were gonna request funding from federal government and the state. If it's through private philanthropy and through dollars that you all allocate, then those limitations aren't the same. That was a big concern, is, you know, what can you do? And really, it's tied to, are you requesting funding from state or federal sources? So, the National Registry, if you meet certain guidelines within that, then they can impose some of, they can impose those restrictions. So, Galveston has a full historic zoning overlay. Palestine had a zoning overlay. I had a historian with a PhD on my staff, it was the oddest thing. It was awesome. He was really smart, but it was, then it, then it triggered all of these restrictions. It had to be wood doors with the, the string to raise it and lower it. The windows had to be that old wavy glass, but that doesn't automatically trigger that.
You said a while ago, "Two thirty-six pylons underneath the house?"
Yes, sir.
And...
And some framing.
I'm sorry, I...
Hand dug.
Did you say one point three to three, about like million more?
So, the, the cost...
I'm just, I'm not trying to...
Sure, sure.
I'm just asking.
And there's no way for them to know, because they would have to kind of dig all the way into it. They, they just, they would say financially, it's not feasible to do a full use of the facility with no restrictions on all three floors.
Cause it's, it's a pure and beam home, correct?
Yes, so...
The dig pylons, you're not gonna get an auger under there?
Nope, they're gonna get down there, they got it, they can do, they've done it before, it's, it's part of that process. They'd be, they'd be going underneath the house and hand digging and hand pouring, a lot of that stuff, but, you know, they, they weren't concerned with that part, they said they've done it before.
So, what do you need from us today, under these...
Well, so, that was kind of the question, is, we, we still are waiting for some of that information from the structural engineers on, on what the second floor could look like. And I didn't wanna presume what the board would want, because the board wanted this, this full use of the whole facility. So, to me, that's not what's being presented tonight. But the next steps for us would be requesting a historic designation from the Kerr County Historic Commission, thank you. And then to take the information that we get, we'll pass this along to HHHC once we know that about the second and third floor options, and have a programming discussion, feasibility discussion with HHHC. And we're, I think that's kind of the next steps. There is still a funding gap for the project, but those are the two next steps I would envision.
Is there a way we can find out what the board wants before we go after the historic, historical designation? See if they still won't even move forward since they can't use the second or third floor?
I think what you all could authorize us to do is to, you know, when we get a sentiment from HHHC on what they want to do, if, if, if their request is move forward, then y'all could tell us tonight, if that's a yes, then move forward with a request for a historic designation. And then we wouldn't have to come back to you for that.
The historic designation is just time and, basically just time, right?
Yes, ma'am.
There's not anything else really involved in that that, that would require anything from us, or...
I don't believe so, ma'am, no.
I think to summarize, we didn't have the engineering study until either late last week or early this week.
That's right.
We have learned that we were worried for a while that we couldn't use the second floor at all, or the third floor. What we've learned is, we can use the first floor, we can use the second floor on a limited basis. In other words, if the displays are designed to be light, you can have more people up there. If the displays are heavy, you have fewer people up there. And the third floor could be used for administrative purposes. A long time ago, I think, that board thought that the third floor could be used for storage, and, I mean, I, I know some of the stuff, cause it's at my print shop, and I didn't think it was gonna go up there. So, if the county will designate it as, as historic structure, then the building codes will allow us, allow that board to use the first and second...
As...
As a museum, but not the third floor. And I don't think the third floor was ever planned for exhibits, if I remember correctly. It was always planned for either storage or administrative work. In my opinion, what the council should do is allow staff to interact with HHHC board and find out if, if they're still amenable to that, that building. And if they're not amenable to that building, Lord knows what's gonna happen, you know? I don't know what, what happened. But, I was encouraged when I got the report, that it's still possible to put a historic museum there. Yeah, there's some limitations, but you have the 1908 house, so of course you're gonna have limitations.
Yeah.
I have a question about the contractor. How did we decide on this contractor? And did we get any bids? Because it seems to me that some of these costs, I just have a, you know, just a concern that we might be able to find some of those costs lower with a different contractor. Can you talk to me a little bit about how we got here?
Sure. So, as y'all remember, last year, we put out a request for qualifications for design-build firms, right? And we received five submissions.
Okay.
And Marksmen was rated the highest of those, and so they were selected to begin that process, and...
Rated the highest...
We had...
But the lowest bidder, or...
The ranking system was, well, it's, so it's a fixed cost, right? So, it was a, it was a fixed cost of three point two five million dollars. Here's your proposal, tell us what you think you can do, tell us when you think you can get it done, give us your past history. And so, there were several, several things that were rated that way.
Okay.
And so, they were ranked highest on that list.
By who?
So, there was the design bill consultant, and it was staff, so myself, EA, Kim, Stuart, Kyle were on that list, and Angela was on that list as well.
I think the CVB lady was on that.
Yes.
Julie Davis was on that.
And so, so we went through several different criteria as a part of that review, but this is, you, the same questions that you have, we have on that list, like, so the air conditioning, you know, why is this cost this?
Right.
I think there's some areas where they're higher and some areas where they're lower than what we expect those things to be. You know, they know some of the things that we don't about that building, but I think they hopefully presume those numbers to decrease, but I think they, they are, they have concerns in some of those areas where they're like, "Well, I don't know exactly how this is gonna work, because we gotta work through all of this." And so, air conditioning's a good example. When I look at that number, I go, "That's a high number."
Mm-hmm.
Right?
The elevator's another one.
Can I also say that all five of the contractors that submitted a proposal all had concerns with the budget?
Every single one of them, yeah.
The pre-COVID guests.
Yeah.
Re-inflation guests.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, so...
Okay, well, that helps me.
Okay.
So, going back to a question that I think the mayor asked, and I wanna get this clear, is there gonna be a cost associated with getting that historical designation?
The cost of filing the paperwork or getting the judge to sign off on it, I think that would be it.
Is, is that, that's minimal?
Yeah.
I assume, and there's nothing that's ongoing to keep that designation or status?
You're asking stuff outside my purview just now, but I don't believe so.
Okay, well, just...
It's a volunteer organization.
After your discussion with the board, if that's a process, you know, some of that information would be good, just as when we go through the cost analysis of it. Do we foresee that if we get that type of designation, that later down the road, we are possibly gonna have to do some of those repairs to the second floor as it continues to where?
No, sir.
No?
I think our requirements as the owner of the building are to maintain it so that they can use it as a facility, but not as a requirement to maintain it in, you know, historic mortar or any of those things. I mean, we, we've, we don't fall under those purviews. Now, if future councils, future boards decide they wanna go after federal dollars to help with the renovations of that, those stipulations may be different, right? So, it depends on a fund, it depends on how you wanna fund it.
Okay, and then lastly, so far, I wanna make sure, cause I'm not sure if we got a direct answer to council member, here's his question. Give us an estimated, just a ballpark amount that Marksmen gave to us, and you gave us that range. Was it one point three to three million, or what was that range?
I mean, forcing them to give...
We're not gonna hold you or them to it, but I wanna know what you said.
Yeah, 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 but that was it, it was one point, one point five to three, in addition to the five point three that's there. But I think really, it's just, it, it came out to be unfeasible to take that existing historic home, put a framework inside it that would meet that threshold for those second and third floors. And so, again, they were, we asked them several times, and they were just like, "I don't, I don't know," you know?
Can I make one real quick comment?
Sure.
I am thankful to staff for their dedication to this project. They are trying to find a way to make it happen. I'm thankful to the Heritage Center Board for their patience as we try to figure out how to transition a vacant house that has no heating, air conditioning, elevator into something the public can use. So, thank you for your patience, and thank you for your dedication to trying to make this happen. There's some hills to climb, but, but Michael and Kim and, and Stuart have been working to try to figure out how to make it happen.
Well, and the board needs to have a chance to absorb this and talk it over and see what they're going to do. So, okay, am I understanding? Are we in agreement to go ahead and find out, find out the rest of the information when we can, take it to the, to the board, and then look into the historic designation? Is, are we, are we willing to take that next step? It shouldn't cost us anything, or minimal at this point.
No, ma'am. It's, we're in a holding pattern with Marksmen, and so, once we make that determination, and if that's a yes, then the path forward is to continue on with the thirty percent documents. And so, at this point, no additional funding.
I've got, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I'm just trying to, I'm, two questions. So, if we get the historical designation, we don't have to do any pylons under the house or anything?
No, we a hundred percent have to do that.
We have to.
Yes.
Yes.
To get the, yeah, the historic, sorry, the historic design, so that has to happen...
Regardless.
No matter.
Okay, that was one question.
The historic designation gets you to the second floor.
I'm not trying to beat the horse, but, so National Historic, is there a state, Joe? Is there a state...
I believe there's a state one, too.
That we can go and ask for funding that's not so strict as national designation? That might be something to look at down the road.
We're getting a nod over here that...
So, you can.
Okay, that's, that was it. I just, I wasn't sure if we could just get the designation and say, "Here's the house, let's go." But if we have to do the...
Down the limestone.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, okay, that was, that was the last two, and yes, ma'am.
Brenda? This is a dumb question, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. Why couldn't you just, for three million dollars, just bulldoze it and replicate it up to commercial code?
So, as the owners of the building who were gifted it, it was gifted to be used for library purposes by the Butt Foundation, or, Charles Butt Foundation?
By an anonymous donor.
Okay.
Oh, man, all right. What happens when you put me up here? And if it were not used for that purpose, then it would go back to the anonymous donor, is my understanding.
Oh, it would still be used for that purpose, we would just, instead of trying to repair what can't really be repaired?
I think we would have to go back to the donor and ask.
Is that an option?
The same way we had to go back to the donor to ask if we could have a museum in there, to make sure that that was, was on the campus of the library, that's why everything says on the campus of the Butthole Swarth Memorial Library.
Yeah.
And to make sure that it will and can be used for library purpose, library use and library purposes, which it can, it will be.
I think we need to let the board have a discussion before we would, before that would be...
Yeah, but I wanted to ask the question because...
Not a bad question. I asked EA, if they tear it down one night and have it rebuilt before everybody woke up the next morning.
Right, right. Cause it'd be cheaper.
It's the same building.
Yeah.
If they had to do a replica, it'd still be pretty expensive, but you see most...
Five and a half million dollars.
Yeah, a lot of museums you see nowadays are gonna be one-story museums, and they'll have everything, it'll be a large footprint, but it'll be a single story.
Okay.
Not a bad question.
No, I mean, it isn't. I think we've all asked that question, so, okay, so, until you're ready to spend more money, lots more money, or designate, you will, you, you'll take this to the board, and you won't be back to us unless there's, the board makes a, a decision that we then need to confirm.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll come, I'll bring it back to y'all, for sure.
All right.
Just a quick question, y'all understand the role, y'all's role? Good.
Okay, we're good with everybody? All right, thank you, Michael.
Yes, ma'am.
And thank you all who have been working on this. It is a, it was kind of a, a blow to, to, to get all of this, and has been for everybody, so...
Martin, it's the same presentation. Sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, next is our public safety facility.
I would like to say before we move off that, uh, both Jason, uh, Lackey and Aaron, our building official, have been phenomenal.
I did not include.
No, 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 that's okay, that's okay, I, they, uh, you know, it's always the same for them, they're always kind of like, all right, how do we, how do we make this work?
We're the bad guys.
I appreciate them very much, uh, for, for, for being the bad guys. Okay, public safety facility, this one is a little easier. So how did we get here? After the bond election and the bond sale and the selection of the design build firm, uh, Burn did, uh, did go get to work. And they got to work on the first part of this, which is a schematic design, which if you think about it, it's just that sheet that's on the, on paper, right? So it's a two-dimensional design, what's your layout, how many acres do you have, what is the purpose of what you're trying to get to? And can we fit all those things into this box within this space? And so we did a bunch of meetings with Burn initially, individually with each department, fire, PD, municipal court, IT, our offices, to figure out, uh, what are all those needs? And we already had kind of a list of those things, so they, from the first iteration when the bond was, uh, being considered. And so they verified those things, and then they wanted to make sure that we knew what we were saying we wanted. And so they said, please come take a look at these public safety facilities that were built not too long ago. So we went and looked at a few facilities in Wiley, Texas, Waxahachie and Sherman, Texas. They all had different components, uh, roughly similar in the size that we were looking at and the scope of what they did. Uh, one was a renovation, one and the other two were brand new builds, um, in the process. And so it was great because we got to hear from the folks who had just gone through it on the staff side. You know, all of our first questions are what would you do differently, or which thing is the worst? We all found out that, well, Chief already knew this, but every police hallway needs to have a little rubber kind of a guard right on the sides because their utility belts and their sidearms always rub up against it, so, uh, scratches the entire wall. Little things like that, that you think are not important or really important, widths of the hallways, uh, half a foot makes a big difference in the comfort of the people who basically live there. And we saw one that was too narrow, it's like, this is really claustrophobic, but they were constrained by, they already had an existing building, so. So we've gone through all those iterations and they have come back to us with schematic design options. And we looked at them, had some program, you know, discussions about, okay, well, what if this was here, what if this was here, does this work, how are the logistics of all that? And so a lot of those discussions, and, oh yeah, on the bottom there, it says, we're now finalizing the schematic designs, and here's the most recent draft. So I know everybody's wanted to take a look at this, so please know that this is a draft, right? This is the schematic, this is that 2D draft, we still have changes, uh, they're already made to this, we don't have their renderings. But this is the last iteration that we received from them. And so what you see there on your top left is the municipal court area. Right, to the, right of that is your fire administration. It's a little harder to see, but tucked in right behind fire is IT, that orange section right there. And then in between fire and police, you have a training room and an EOC. And then everything to your right there, that is PD, so that starts with, um, your front office space there, evidence, support services, CID investigations, dispatch, and I'll get into more zoomed in versions, so you don't have to strain your eyes. But essentially, we were able to fit the things that were asked for inside this schematic. And meet all of our requirements on our own code, which was important to us. So, this is the municipal court, and this one I'd like to come back to and talk to you all about, uh, once more, because this is the one that had the question for me. So right here, um, again, these things are not fully finalized, we're looking at, you know, the fire chief, police chief, taking it back to their staff, said, hey, what does this look like, you know? And so everybody runs their iteration, if we have to go here and here and here, does that make sense, or are we too far away from a bathroom? All of these questions that you have to kind of ask yourself as you're building a building. And so we've done that, we've came, we've come back to Burn, and I think this is our final iteration to them for this schematic design portion of it. And so that is the fire area.
Now, where did you say IT was?
All right, so if you're looking at that orange section right there, that's information technology in the center of this piece that's kind of interior. Yeah, down the middle, so between fire and the EOC.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so your emergency operations training area is that purple section right there. And let's keep going. So public safety, uh, police is a big portion of this, and so we have, um, records up in the front, and administration, support services, um, evidence. Now, this is an interesting thing because you don't think, you look at these spaces and you go, you just need a room. But you don't need a room, you need a room that's pretty big for some of this stuff. And we saw evidence just kind of piles up and piles up and piles up, it doesn't really go away, even as much as they can try to triage it and get it out the door for that, that they can. So there's going to be a big, tall space for this evidence, it's going to have those library stacks that you can turn this way and turn that way. And what we saw was.
See that dance again, that was great.
I can, I can do it for you, yes, sir. What we saw is that the one facility didn't have that, and what they had was an overflow, and it was disorganized, and, um, this is, this is one of those ones where I, I, it was just, it's such a tall space, when you see it, you'll see it, but anyway. We have some outdoor spaces, uh, for everybody, this dispatch here is kind of in the center. They have, it's not their own, but they kind of have their own space right there. And, uh, and then we've got investigations and patrol all set up here. And this is training area, we've got locker rooms, men's locker room and a women's locker room. Physical and virtual training here, we've got fitness areas over here, so in essence, we were able to accommodate everything that was asked of in the first iteration. Here are the things that we would want to see, um, they're encompassed within this building, which at this point is just about sixty-nine thousand five hundred square feet, I believe. And this is an outbuilding that would, um, be used as, that housed mobile command, several other things, um, in this space. So what are our next steps? The next steps are to finalize that schematic design, so they're in the process of doing that, and we get into the design development plans. So schematic design is us saying, you know, I need an office, I need an office, it's going to house police officers, and there's going to be this many officers, and they need desks here, and they need this, this and this. So really kind of here's what that 2D layout is, they know roughly speaking where, uh, how big of a space you need for this many people. The design development phase gets into, um, here's what it's going to be to include electrical, heating, air conditioning, they starting, all those components are then included. And they don't want to do that until they're like, is this the layout that you want to have? Yes, all right, let's start digging it, where are the AC decks going to run, where's the electrical going to go, where are the wet walls for the plumbing, all that stuff? And it's going to have interior, exterior, uh, building materials, appliances, fixtures, all that part will get kind of sussed out in this step of the process. And at the end of the design development phase, that's when you get the 3D rendering. So they're going to come back and present you all with a presentation, um, once we get further into that design development phase. But we didn't want you to wait much longer before you got a chance to see this. So again, I say, please don't hold us to the drawing because some of the hallways are going to change, some of the other iterations are going to change. And once we get further into that design development phase, we start looking at, here's this material, and this is where the trade-offs will come in. You know, at your house, if it's a, a marble countertop or vermicah, or, um, you know, wood floors or faux wood floors. And so this is what those folks do every single day, and they will give us value engineering every step of the way for us, uh, to help us continue to meet all the needs that we have in this facility. So last thing I wanted to show you was, as we were discussing the facility, because all of public safety is going to be over there, and we are limited in the space that we currently house here, we asked the design team to look at, are there administrative functions within this space, specifically the courtroom that we could use that could double as council chambers? And so they have come up with that. So it is, our, our biggest discussion with them was, we need a municipal court that can function as a council chambers, not the other way around. And so this is a courtroom that you all could potentially use as a space to have council meetings in the future. Now, when we start getting into the horse trading of, here's how much the cost of everything is, this added about a thousand square feet total to the space, but it didn't really add too much cost, we've got a little bit less if, uh, an AV costs. And, uh, because we film everything, same, same deal Martin has back there, we would have here, albeit we would separate the TVs from him, so he's not so hot. But I wanted to make sure that, that you were able to see this and, and comment any questions you have on this, um, right here, but that's a little addition to that administrative function you'd be able to have at that facility.
Well, personally, I'm glad to see that, I think it's, I think it's a great way to use the space, and, and I also think it's a, a, a good way for the public to be able to utilize the building, more than just what we had originally designated it for, so personally, I'm, I'm happy about it. Council, any comments? What would happen to this space?
Uh, I, I know that we could figure out, we're sort of bursting at the seams, when this facility was created, I think upon move in, it was full. We were at capacity when we first moved in, so you, you try to, you try to build these things out for future capacity. When we came in here, we didn't have any, um, it could still function, uh, for board meetings, planning and zoning meetings, for BIC meetings, for anything. This was just an option that we wanted to put in front of you. But I think if we were given a half a day to figure out something for this room, everybody behind me could find a use pretty quickly.
How many entrances overall will there be into the building? Do we know?
Hmm, some, several?
One, two, three?
Maybe, uh, there's, there's, from a, from a public standpoint?
Yes.
Yeah, there should be three, so it would be, uh, there's going to be emergency exits around, but the public exits will be on the top portion there, uh, to get into PD. And then fire and IT will have kind of a central, like a lobby, each one of them has kind of their own sort of lobby-ish area, um, entering into. And you won't cross them, you would go specifically to court, you would go specifically to PD, uh, and, um, I suppose you could get from PD over to fire if you took that hallway, Chief. But I don't know if that's a public access right there, so, and then if you see on the top, in the parking lot, there's a memorial. Memorial is not, um, going to be there, we're going to move it over, uh, more to the center. But that's the, uh, public safety memorial, there's a committee that has agreed to fund that, and so we designated a seventy-five by seventy-five square foot space for them to utilize. So once we confirm where that location will be, then they can set to work on their fundraising efforts and, and move forward.
The staff parking located on the bottom of this, is that like a parking garage that's multi-story?
No, no.
That's going to be one hundred and twenty-nine spaces in that location there?
So you see the, so the brown spaces?
Those are parking spaces.
Those are parking spaces too, so.
So that is dirt, okay.
That is not dirt, no, it's, it's, uh, so a part of this process, we've asked them to look at low-impact design for some features within the building. So that fits within UGRA's model for, uh, new construction. And so we thought that was a good space to start, and, um, and so that's what you see on the periphery there.
Are we still on target for fourth quarter 2024?
We're, it all depends, I think it probably, you know, to be safe, I'm not ready to give a date, I think we get past the design development phase. I think if we keep pushing along the way that we're doing, the team has been very responsive, the design team has been very responsive, our staff has been doing a great job meeting, you know, their, their asks, get us this information back very quickly. I think we'll be able to have a more definitive timeline the next time we come see you, so hopefully within the next month, um, it's in that range.
Exciting to see this come together.
Yes. Any other comments, questions, council?
No.
I appreciate the, y'all taking a look at that extra space there as a possible additional council meeting location, whatever you want to call it. That, that added square footage to it, so it added cost to it, what are we looking at?
It's, uh, two hundred fifty thousand dollars.
And we would still be under?
Yeah, we're, we're, I mean, yeah, it didn't, it's not breaking a budget.
Okay, and is that, if we would go into that, does that go into the, um, gosh, I'm losing the word, the cushion that we budgeted for?
Contingency?
Contingency, thank you.
It's still, it's, so we're still refining all of those numbers, so we have the schematic, now Burn with their engineers, their AC folks, everybody else, they're going to get to a more refined number. They feel good, they head on to us, they're like, we're going to meet this budget, we're going to make sure we get you what you want. So, um, as we get further along into that design development phase, that's really when you see a, a really more refined cost estimate. So when we get back next month, we'll be able to say, here, here's what that is. And then I think really it becomes a, um, it really becomes a function of what are the value engineering that you can do and what are the trade-offs? And so the ones that are small, and then just, okay, we're going to do this kind of material versus this, uh, those are easy. When we have to say, or if we have to say, okay, programmatically, we can do these things, but we might not be able to do this, we'll, we'll come have that conversation, so.
What is, what does the next step look like? You said we would get a presentation from the design build team, is that it?
We'll get an update from them on, on when, but my hope is that this, my hope is at the second meeting of August.
For council?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's my hope.
Okay.
So.
Sounds good.
This is exciting, very exciting.
Well, staff has done a fantastic job, so, and.
Thank you to everybody, any other comments from council? All right.
Thank you.
Good news, keep it up. And our last one, we'll have a process review on short-term rentals.
I promise I'll take a, I promise I won't go ninety minutes, but I can't promise the hour. I promise, it'll probably be about five minutes, so it's just an update on the process that we've implemented for our short-term rental units as, uh, since we've implemented the ordinance in December. So a quick reminder, uh, Martin, can you move it over on the screen?
A quick reminder. Stretching it up from the logo.
So just a reminder that we had a zoning code that required, uh, short-term rental units to, uh, seek a conditional use permit. And also because of that conditional use permits that were being processed and some other, other conditional, uh, concerns about operations and different things like that, it was recommended that we put a ordinance together to present to council, and council was presented that ordinance, and ultimately they decided to, uh, create a short-term rental committee, and that committee refined that ordinance and ultimately presented it to council, and that ordinance was adopted on December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Oops. There we go, didn't want to change, but there's two sections of the ordinance that I do want to highlight is section eighty dash thirty, which is basically the permit required, and that's basically letting all the short-term operators within the city of Kerrville that they needed to pull a permit with development services. And then section eighty dash five, the length of the permit, uh, which is an annual permit that goes from January first to December thirty-first, and then with a renewal period, uh, around November, December time period. And then the last piece is the CUP and those short-term rentals that are by right, they had a. They had a requirement that they had to submit for an application and a permit by June 1st of this year. And so in order to facilitate that, we ended up creating a short-term rental page on our website. And it's located on the development services page and also through the main page of the curviltx.gov. And this webpage actually provides information on the ordinance itself, gives general details. It gives the zoning information as well as to what areas are allowed. And so just as a reminder, short-term rentals are allowed in R1A, R3, RT, DAC, or downtown arts and culture, and mixed use. Those are the zones that are allowed. And then also registration information. From a registration piece, it gives them information as to who they need to contact. In this case, the finance department for the hot tax information, and they contact them. And then also information for code enforcement so that they can work with them to get on MyGovernment Online. And that's how they actually process their applications. So just a very high-level introduction to the process. I've probably oversimplified it, but it's basically a three-step process. You get an application, do an application review, and then from there, you get the issuance of the permit. So the applications, all applications are done through MyGovernment Online. The application review comes in, staff reviews all the different requirements that are in the ordinance. They confirm zoning, and most importantly, they confirm with finance if they are registered with them to pay the hot tax itself. And if not, that's when we redirect them to the finance department. They get situated there. They provide the evidence to code enforcement that that has been accomplished, and we issue the permit. So how, over, over time, when it comes down to permits being issued, you can just, I put this timeline here so you can kind of see how the permits have been issued since we adopted the ordinance. In December, we had one short-term rental permit that was issued, and we took advantage of that one. We had the actual module ready a little earlier than we thought. And we were able to coordinate with one short-term rental operator and had them go through the process, worked out a little bit of the kinks. And what we found was that the process was working the way we intended it to. And we opened it up in January, and then January, we came in with 37 permits that we issued. And then you could kind of see it kind of drop down, and then we had a huge spike in May. And the reason we had a huge spike in May, we worked diligently contacting short-term rental owners via direct contact phone, email, notices, working with PIO office to send out press release and also social media communications. And that actually increased our short-term permits that we issued for the month of May for up to 46. And then the last June and July had eight and three respectively. So that brings our total number to 106 permits that we've issued. Of the 106 permits that we've issued, there were 58 of them that were, had a short-term rental unit CUP. And of those 58, 53 have been issued their permits. And what we also have is five CUPs that are no longer short-term rentals. And as I understand it, one has gone to just being a long-term rental. Another one is selling their property, and the others have basically expressed no desire to actually be a short-term rental. Questions?
So basically, this has probably worked better than we anticipated, right?
I believe so. It's been a very efficient process. I have Donna here because she's the one that's been working with all our short-term rentals. And we have finance here as well. They've been working with that, yeah.
Donna, have you, do you, have you gotten much flack?
Oh, no, not at all.
Good, good, good news.
Drew, don't you miss it on PMZ?
And I think one thing that's helped us tremendously, I kind of skipped it, but one thing that's helped us tremendously is this piece right here with the Curville Short-Term Zone lookup. That is something that Josh and GIS created for us, and it's on our website. And all you have to do is enter your address or the address that you have in question. And the system will tell you if it is allowed or not allowed as a short-term rental because of zoning. So I think that's helped us tremendously as well and helped that process.
Do you think there are very many out there that have not come forward?
I think we're doing a good job of capturing them all. Working with finance, they're the ones that actually see it up from the hot tax standpoint. And then from there, they gain contact with code enforcement, and Donna reaches out to them and gets them moving forward.
So out of the remaining CUPs that you had on that, that number, is that going to have to come back to council?
Well, that's a great question, and that is a question that we've been debating internally. So I would hope to have an answer with you, to y'all by hopefully soon. I don't want to give a committee an exact date, but there's some research we have to do on our part that we're trying to hammer out so that we can get a precise answer.
In terms of whether we have to or when we have to?
To match legal state law. We just want to make sure we're.
We want to be legal.
Yeah.
You want to be legal. Okay, yep. All right, sounds good.
And that was Joe's question?
I just want to know what happened to the, the CUPs that were no longer SDRs, so.
Brenda, anything?
I'm good.
Jeff? All right, thank you, sir.
So y'all get 55 minutes back.
Pardon?
Y'all get 55 minutes back.
Oh, we get five minutes back, all right, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Well, that is really good news. And it's just good to know that what we hoped would work is working. So that's excellent, excellent. All right, we have reached the end of the workshop. We do not need to go into executive session for any reason. So I am going to adjourn the workshop at 4:57. And we are going to open at, a little bit early, but Kim, you're ready, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So at 4:57, we will open the Curville Employee Benefit Trust meeting. Thank you. And I believe, counsel, that at the end of this, we will, this will come to a vote for us. So it won't just be a consensus, that we will vote on this.
Okay, you ready?
We're ready.
All right. This is the FY 2024 Employee Benefits. You have your trustees of the Employee Benefit Trust hats on right now. And what the Employee Benefit Trust is, it's chapter 222002 of the Texas Interest Code. There's an annual tax of 1.75% that's imposed on insurers for gross premiums received from their policyholders. And in order to be exempt from that tax, you have to establish either a single entity benefit trust or establish or participate in a chapter 172 risk pool. In July 2008, the city council approved a resolution to create the Employee Benefit Trust. And the person that just walked in is Natalie Haskett with Gallagher Benefits, and she is one of our consultants that helps us with our benefits.
Hi Natalie, welcome to our meeting.
Thank you. Our Employee Benefit Trust, I told you, it was 1.75% tax, so we save that tax money. And so far, you can see in our, in our spreadsheet here, from 2009 all the way to 2023, we have saved $716,952. So it's a worthwhile cause. For our bid process this year, we received two bids for medical and multiple bids for our ancillary benefits. Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas is our current provider. They came back with a 36.7% increase. That was our initial renewal. The plan that they provided to us was the same as the current plan. We also received a bid from United Healthcare at a 24.6% increase. Aetna and Cigna declined to provide a proposal based upon our current plan experience. Our loss ratio with Blue Cross Blue Shield is at 113.8% as of May of 2023. What the loss ratio is, is based on the premiums that we pay monthly versus the claims paid that, claims that are paid monthly. And that was 113%, so they were basically losing money. That put us in a very challenging negotiation, negotiating position. However, this is our 11th year, will be our 11th year with Blue Cross Blue Shield. Oh, sorry, I went too fast. And we began negotiations with Blue Cross Blue Shield due to a stronger provider network access in Curville. The best and final offer, which we call a BAFO, with package savings, came down from the 37% to 13.2%. They also provided us with $150,000 premium, premium credit, and there are no plan design changes. So we didn't have to make any modifications like increase our deductible or our co-pays or anything like that. Everything is going to stay the same. We have a package savings deal with Blue Cross Blue Shield that includes them to provide also our dental, our life and AD&amp;D, our voluntary life and AD&amp;D, and our short-term disability. And they provided all those at the same rates with all the same plans. We also ended up negotiating with UHC just to see how competitive they were, while realizing that some of the providers within Curville were not part of their network. Their best and final offer with the package savings was 22.6%. So they didn't come down very much. They didn't have any plan design changes, but they did offer a 16% rate cap next year. However, there's still some provider network disruption. So we did, we wanted to make sure that our employees could use the same doctors that they're using now. So our recommendation is to stay with Blue Cross Blue Shield. This would be our 11th year with Blue Cross Blue Shield. Again, a 13.2% increase with $150,000 premium credit. And on this slide, you can see our rate history with them. This is our highest increase since 2014. But, you know, with the loss ratio that we have, it's kind of expected. So I'm glad that we were able to get it down some. So just a little bit about our medical plans. We have two plans, no plan design changes again. We have a PPO plan with a $3,000 deductible and a $6,000 family deductible. Our office visit co-pay is $40 for the physician and $55 for the specialist. Our telehealth, which is MD Live, we have a co-pay of $40. Preventive care, routine lab and imaging is paid at 100%. And we have a $150 deductible for our prescriptions and the co-pays of 15, 40, 70, and 150 on the different tiers. We also have an HRA plan. We only have four, four employees that are part of that HRA plan, but we want to keep it there just for those four employees. With that plan, you have a $3,000 deductible, $6,000 family deductible. The medical coverage is paid at 80%, same prescription coverage, and we don't provide an HRA upfront contribution anymore like we used to do several years ago. The difference in these two plans is there's no co-pay for the, the doctors, but they pay a little less in the rates monthly for this plan. The Blue Cross Blue Shield Dental, it is, we have a city contribution to this, so it's a core benefit. It's a, we pay 100% of the cost for the employee and 17 to 18% of the cost for the dependents. We have a $50 deductible per person, $150 deductible that's waived for the preventive care. We have a $1,500 annual max benefit, a $1,500 orthodontic lifetime max, and that's for children up to age 19. We have preventive services that are covered at 100%. That means your cleanings, your x-rays, and your exams. Basic services like fillings and extractions are covered at 80% after the deductible. Major services like oral surgery, inlays, onlays, and crowns, those are covered at 50%. And the city and the employee contribution remains the same as this current year. We have city-paid life and AD&amp;D. The life insurance is employee-only coverage. It's one times an employee's base annual salary with a maximum of $50,000. And we also have an accidental death and dismemberment plan, AD&amp;D. The payment is based on the severity of the disability or the dismemberment if somebody makes a claim for that. The cost for that plan is $1,000 of covered monthly payroll. Basic life is .05, AD&amp;D rate is .02. The total life and AD rate, AD rate is seven cents, and it's estimated at $36 per employee per year. Very cheap coverage. Then we have a long-term disability plan. It's a maximum monthly benefit of $10,000 or 60% of an employee's base monthly salary. It is reduced, the benefit is reduced by social security disability, workers' compensation, employer-sponsored sick leave, or retirement benefits. So they don't, they don't allow anybody to double-dip there. We have an elimination waiting period of 90 days. And that's when somebody could, could be on short-term disability if they chose to pay for that voluntary plan. The maximum benefit period is later of age 65 or social security normal retirement age. The cost for this coverage is 30 cents per $100 of monthly covered payroll, estimated at $180 per employee per year. And this is our same-plan design, same rate as current. Again, our core involuntary benefits, or our core benefits and then our voluntary benefits, which I hadn't told you about yet. The city contributes to the cost of these benefits, if they're a core benefit, that's the medical. So the employee cost is paid at 100% by the city. The dependent cost is paid 73 to 74% by, by the city. And it just depends on what tier of coverage somebody has. So if they have employee and spouse, or employee and child, or employee and family, it's either the 74, 75, or 73%. On the dental coverage, employee is 100% paid by the city, and the dependent cost is 17 to 18% paid by the city, again, depending on the tier. The life and AD, AD&amp;D is employee, employee coverage is 100% paid by the city. And then the long-term disability, the employee cost is paid by the city. Our voluntary benefits, that means no city contribution. These are benefits that an employee can purchase. We offer to them under group rates. However, the city doesn't contribute anything to this. Is the vision coverage, the supplemental life and AD&amp;D, short-term disability, Aflac, and then MASA, emergency medical transport.
Kim, off the top of your head, right now, how many, just a ballpark figure of how many are involved in voluntary?
Oh, we, we have a lot.
You, we do?
Yeah, most, most everybody will get a little bit of additional life insurance or a lot of new people will purchase the, or will sign up for the short-term disability because they don't have any leave available yet.
Okay, good.
And most everybody takes the vision coverage because it's really, really reasonable.
Good, okay, thank you.
So for FY 2024, the cost of benefits, we base the cost of benefits on per employee per month, which is P E P M or per employee per year, which is P E P Y. The city contribution to the cost of benefits for Blue Cross Blue Shield Medical is $10,353 per employee per year. For dental, it's $390 per employee per year. For the life and AD&amp;D, it's $36 per employee per year. And the long-term disability is 180 per employee per year. For a total of $10,959 per employee per year. This is our 11th year with Blue Cross Blue Shield. We have a high satisfaction rate among our plan members, and it's well-received in the area medical community. For our estimated budget, we budget benefits for all full-time positions that are approved by council. So for this FY 2024, we are asking for 339 positions. We have vacancies that occur during the year, and so the monthly billing varies. And in addition, employees can change if they had, get married, or get divorced, or have a baby, or a child ages out, then they would change their coverage at that time. The current employees covered by our benefits are 321 employees, and that's what our benefit bids are based on. How we budget our, our benefits is, we do a budget calculation. We base it on 321 covered employees times the total cost of benefits. So that's the $10,959 per employee per year. That includes the medical, the dental, the group life, AD&amp;D, and LTD. And those are all the core benefits. The total city expense for that is 3.517839. And you divide that by the 339 budgeted employees. Gets you to a rate of $10,377 per employee per year. We have a benefit reserve where if we're not fully staffed, we still cost out to the departments the $10,500 or whatever it is for the year. And so if, if that's not used by that department, then we put that into the benefit reserve. So as of 6:30, our benefit reserve balance was $329 and $944. The benefit reserve grows due to constant changes in our number of, number of employees, our employees changing benefit plans, and then our employees changing coverage. Our current situation, we do have the potential to be fully staffed as we are closer than we have been in the past. And I hope I didn't just jinx it. The chief, our other chief was over here too, and they're shaking their heads, I'm sure. So our budget calculation is $10,377 per employee per year. What we want to put into the budget for FY 2024 is a flat, a round number of $10,500 per employee per year. And that is how our budget is, that's how Julie has budgeted so far, so that's where we are. And we want to authorize the use of the employee benefit reserve if needed to pay for any overages. So if we do become fully staffed and we need a little bit extra money for that month, we would like to be able to dip into that benefit reserve for that. So the action to be taken tonight is that staff recommends council, acting as the trustees of the Employee Benefit Trust, approve the FY 2024 employee benefit plans, rates, and funding as presented, and authorize the interim city manager to execute the contracts with the providers. I am happy to answer any questions that you have, but I did want to let you know that after this, you'll, at 6 o'clock, you'll go into the regular council meeting. And 4A on the consent agenda during the council meeting is for the council to transfer the ownership of funds from the city of Curville into the city of Curville Employee Benefit Trust to pay for, pay for the benefits. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, questions for her?
Just a comment, thank you for your hard work.
Yes, sir.
Could I hire you, and I need somebody to negotiate?
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Meismer. If we did have to go into reserve, do you have an estimate?
I don't have an estimate. Because we may, we may be fully staffed, but we may have people that change their coverages. So we may not even have to.
Okay, have we ever had to do that before?
We have.
Was it significant?
No.
Okay. All right. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, Jeff, any questions?
No.
Comments? All right. So what we need is the motion to approve the fiscal year 2024 employee benefit plans, rates, and funding. Is that correct?
Yes, and authorize the interim city manager to execute the contracts.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2024 employee benefit plans, rates, and funding as presented, and authorize the interim city manager to execute the contracts with the providers.
Okay.
We have a second. All in favor, raise your right hand, and it passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
All right. Good work. Thank you very much. Okay, we're moving right along. At 5:11, we will close the Kerrville Employee Benefit Trust meeting, and we have 45 minutes before we need to be back.
Stay close.
We have refreshments upstairs?
Yeah.
Good.
Yes, ma'am.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Yes.
Well, join us upstairs for refreshments if you would like before you go back. So thank you for coming.